Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular Tuesday, May 2nd, meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present, and the meeting is called to order. And we will begin our meeting, as usual, please, with a moment of silence. Okay, thank you, and if you'll stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very good. This is a time in the meeting that we have set aside for planning commissioner announcements. Are there any announcements this evening?
I have two announcements. One of them is, there's a thing called Project Surf Camp, and that's to help some of the disabled kids to go surfing. A commission or councilperson, Makovecsky, is involved in that. And another group that's also involved is the American Karate School. And what they do is they have this kick-a-thon at Coleman Park, where they go in and they take donations, you know, a donation, and my grandson's in there. Anyway, that's going to be on May 20th, at 10:00. They're going to do the kick-a-thon. So if you see some grommets and karate gear, ask them for donations, maybe throw them some money that way, so they can help out. And half the money goes to Project Surf Camp, and half the money goes to scholarships for karate camp. And then the other announcement is, my friend Jack from the Skateboard Museum, he let me know today that back in 1972, when they went to Morro Bay High, they, there was a group of a lot of the old, now older guys, they did a 24-hour marathon around, on a bicycle, around the running track. And the running track is going to be taken out this summer, so in, you know, 45 years later, they, they're going to be doing this marathon, the 24-hour marathon. And I, I'm honored, you know, I'm not from here, but I was honored to, you know, be involved in that. So that's going to be on Saturday also, May 20th, starts at 10:00, and it's going to go 24 hours. And if you want to sponsor that, and that money's going to go to the high school track team. And so, you know, if you want to get more information, you can just go to the Skateboard Museum and talk to Jack, and he can lead you to the right website and everything.
Excellent. Any further? Well, I would, I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Commissioner Jerry Luer for filling in for me last week and doing a great job and keeping the ball rolling. And I guess I should just explain to the people that are out there that my absence was due to the fact that I've contracted hepatitis A. And aside from feeling fairly sick, I was concerned two weeks ago that I would still be contagious, and while we enjoy sharing our views and sharing our thoughts, we kind of draw the line at microbes. So hopefully, hopefully I didn't, didn't infect anyone. So then we'll move along to public comment period. This is a period for remarks from the public on any item that's not on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone who would like to speak, please come forward, give us your name, and we'd love to hear from you.
Hello. My name is Kristen Hauser. I'm the manager at Grape Leaf Deli &amp; Market. We just opened up on Main Street, right across from Coalesse Books and next to the bike shop. And we do heirloom Middle Eastern cuisine, all from recipes handed down to our owner, Abraham, from his mother in Palestine. We source as much local food as we can, and everything's made from scratch, and I brought some food this evening. So just wanted to let you all know that we're in town, and we're so excited and have been well-received. I think everyone in Morro Bay is excited about the diversity of cuisine. So thank you for all your hard work in inviting us into the community, so we hope to see you in the restaurant.
Thank you very much. Great addition to the local restaurant scene, something we didn't have before.
I have eaten there, it kind of, and it's really good food. It kind of reminded me back in, by UCLA in the '70s, '80s, they had Gyro and those kind of, yeah, back in the day. And, man, and it's reasonably priced, good food.
Well, I'm looking forward to it. Anyone else who would like to speak? Then we will close public comment, bring it back to the commission, and proceed on to Item A, our consent calendar, which this evening consists of our current and advanced planning processing list. Any comments or suggestions or issues with that? If not, do we have a motion, then, to accept the consent calendar?
I'll move that we accept the consent calendar.
Second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion, we have a second, all those, is there any discussion on the motion? Then all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. So then our public hearing for this evening, we only have one public hearing scheduled for tonight's meeting, and that would be an amendment, a hearing on an amendment, A00-045 to Conditional Use Permit Number 30-99, from, I believe, 2001, involving a development at 845 Embarcadero Street. And I believe that Cindy is going to give us our staff report on that.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This is an amendment to Conditional Use Permit Number 3099. On the screen, you see a vicinity map for the city lease site known as 845 Embarcadero, outlined in orange on the screen. I'm going to try to advance to the next screen. Okay. So I guess if I would ask AGP if they could come out and assist me with the pointer, it's not clicking forward. But this is, as Chairperson Teft said, a conditional use permit amendment. The applicant is seeking to repair an existing concrete seawall at the lease site, make modifications to the existing floating dock system. The project, all good? Okay. Also includes rock riprap repair, as I said, modification of existing floating dock, one new dock slip, a new three, approximate 340 square foot kayak launch float, reconstruction of an existing kayak and electric boat rental kiosk, along with removing seven existing wood pilings and replacing it with seven steel pilings. The project is located in the original jurisdiction of the Coastal Commission. The applicant would be required to seek coastal development permit approval for this. The city's review authority is the conditional use permit process. The site is located at a well-known existing visitor-serving commercial structure known as the Boat Yard. Just to give you a little bit of background history, the staff report said 1989, but I believe I was corrected, it was actually 1999. The previous structures located at the lease site were destroyed by fire, and it was CUP 3099, that was the use permit that permitted reconstruction of the building, as well as the new floating dock system. And tonight's application would amend that conditional use permit to provide the repairs to the seawall, make the dock modifications, and provide for some public access improvements. This is a result of the seawall, which partially failed in 2015. At that time, some temporary emergency repairs were made. The applicant is seeking to provide a permanent solution to that seawall, which does support that commercial, commercial structure that's there. And here's a little bit more detail, which I already described, what specifically the proposed development would do. The one correction I would like to make is that the amount of rock riprap that would be removed and replaced in the staff report, it's a 6,000 square feet on the north side, 1,000 on the south side. That was a typo. It is actually approximately 2,000 in total. And then the slide identifies the remaining amendment items. The kiosk structure that's located adjacent to the gangway going down to the docks is actually two businesses. It's currently two separate structures with a small gap in between. It would be proposed as one structure with two kiosks in it, but no increase in size of the building. The project zoning is waterfront plan development with an S4 overlay. And here is an existing street view image of the site. Actually, this picture is approximately one to two years old. If you've been down to the site recently, you will see that it's currently in the process of being repainted a gray color. On the screen, you see an existing site plan. This shows the existing floating dock system. Okay, there's the pointer. The proposed changes to the existing dock system would realign the floating docks, so it's more square with the building. However, in order to make the seawall repairs, the project proposes to remove the entire floating dock system, make the repairs to the seawall, and this would be done, this would be done per engineering recommendations, which include 74 lineal feet of sheet piles located about one to one and a half feet from the existing concrete wall. Sheet piles would be installed using tie-back anchors, and the wall would be backfilled below the harbor walk area. So thus, in order to get into that seawall repair, the dock system would come off. And then upon the completion of the seawall repairs, the floating dock system would be reconstructed with an addition of one new slip. And so in this slide, this is the proposed site plan. Here you see there's three finger docks, but there is, the plans do show eight tie-up locations. And in the proposed site plan, each of the finger slips would be lengthened to 50 feet in length. This plan here shows placement of boats. And then on the left, and I apologize, my pointer's not very dark here. There we go. This is the location of the kayak launch float. And then here, it shows the existing gangway, and then the area of the seawall. The applicant has provided a public access closure plan. The areas in green denote that all areas of public access that would be open during the proposed work. In the applicant's application, they provided plans which called for a 60-day closure plan. And the area of red would be the area that would be closed down necessary to make these seawall repairs. Staff has recommended a condition that the public access closure be closed for no greater than 45 days, subject to extensions upon Community Development Director approval. And that is to minimize impact to public access in this important area. Applicant has also provided some simulations, part of the public access improvements, although they're not making any changes in this area, they are, in terms of width of the lateral axis, this is shown on the plans, is already 10 feet. But they are proposing to remove the existing metal table benches there and replace them with accessible, ADA accessible, concrete benches. And you'll note that they are three-sided benches. Currently, today, though, all of the tables have been removed, because, as I said, they are undergoing some painting, and so that's currently not there. But that is a simulation of where they would be placed and how they would be looked. And color board was provided, and the hard copy is before the commission on the table. This shows the materials for the kiosk structure, hardy plank siding with a gray color, copper roofing, and white trim. And here we have some elevations of the proposed kiosk structure. You'll see that the railing, the harbor walk, is actually above the kiosk structure, so it is not level with the existing bayside lateral access and doesn't take away from that all. And I do have some pictures, I'll show you this photographically in a moment. But this is a south elevation image, and then the west elevation image, which showed the two businesses, the kiosk and the electric rental, electric boat rental. Part of the applicant's proposal includes a custom-made kayak storage facility. This shows it both in elevation view and in the front view. They do currently store kayaks down there at the floating dock system. This would provide a solution that would more contain the paddle boards and the kayaks. And here, because I said this was a custom build, the applicant didn't have manufacturer's cut sheet, but did provide these representations of the type of storage system that they are seeking approval for. The plans also show a public access sign plan. In this area, you see the edge of the seawall outlined in purple. Signs, one, that would be on the north and the south end of the lease site, are the public access signs, which are actually shown here on the next slide, coastal access. That's customary at all harbor lease sites. And then sign two would be the coastal access public floating dock sign. That is also typical of what we would see. Sign three would be an interpretive sign, and the signed copy for that is still in process, similar to a previous project that the Planning Commission reviewed. The applicant is working with the local historical society in developing that, and so there is a condition of approval on the project, that that signed content be provided to staff prior to issuance of a building permit. And then sign four, which would be adjacent to the tables and which is right outside the existing coffee shop business, would be a sign that says that these are public, these tables are for public seating, and that no food purchase or beverage are necessary, excuse me, no food purchase is necessary to use these tables, which is also consistent with other harbor front or lease side projects. Again, slides of that. And then the staff report did include a discussion of parking in the staff report. Based on the information that the applicant provided on the title page of the plans, it showed that there was a difference in 181 feet, or 180 feet of lineal feet. It was pointed out to staff that there was actually an error in calculating what their parking requirement would be. So the city's zoning ordinance requires one space per 35 lineal feet of boat tie-down area. The calculations shown on the plans include kayak launch float area, includes the head float area, it includes areas that basically you could not tie a boat down. So when that was recalculated by the applicant's representative, it determined that, in fact, it is 116 lineal feet, not 180 feet. And this is based on the plan measurements. Using that calculation, the requirement would be three additional parking spaces are triggered, not five. Pursuant to City Council resolution, the city currently has a waived requirement for parking in lieu fees. And so based on that information, that was obtained by staff after the staff report was released, staff is recommending that the planning condition 12 that's included in your resolution would be removed. And then one thing, additional thing that I wanted to point out is that although it is customary for lease sites on the waterfront to have historic parking credits, that's a practice that the city has previously recognized. In staff's research and putting the staff report together, city records showed that there were no historic parking credits for the site, and that, in fact, when the coffee shop business went in in 2009, it used the last two historic parking credits that were available to that lease site. And so therefore, they were now at zero, thus the requirement for the parking in lieu. The applicant's representative disputes that information, and so the precise number of historic parking credits is unknown. There was previously sport fishing uses at this lease site, as has been told by the applicant's representative. We have asked for that additional information. However, it doesn't affect this project, because the net result is that the applicant would not be required to pay parking in lieu fees based on our parking ordinance. But I just wanted to mention that in the presentation, because we do frequently talk about historic parking credits when it comes to lease sites. And so oftentimes, what we find is that it just requires a little bit of additional research when it comes to these types of projects. And here's the table that the applicant provided. It shows by slip how the calculations were derived, and so I include that in the presentation just so you can see how the 116 new lineal feet was derived, and that one parking space per 35 lineal feet. Environmental review, the, as part of the California Environmental Quality Act, staff did look at this project for that requirement. The project is subject to California eelgrass mitigation policy. There was an eelgrass planning survey done in 2016 by Tenera, and the applicant did consult with the National Marine Fisheries Services, service, excuse me, actually several times, and Tenera, the applicant's biologist, also consulted with them. And this was based on the small area of eelgrass that's located in this lease site. There are two small patches in the northwest corner of the site. And so based on that review and that concurrence that was received from NIMPs, the project would be eligible for an exemption under CEQA, Class 1E. The applicant, though, does have our standard BMPs that we put on all of our projects, which is that they would require, they would be required to do a pre-construction eelgrass survey and a post-eelgrass survey, because they are subject to the CAMP. And they would also be required to provide a marine mammal, marine mammal wildlife contingency plan, and these are noted as conditions of approval in the resolution. And then today, and actually at the end of the day yesterday, staff did receive a comment letter from Chairperson Teft. I have put extra copies of the letter to the public on the public table there by the computer, and then each of the planning commissioners, you did receive a copy of the letter. The letter from Chairperson Teft provided some additional information to staff, and this is a very condensed summary of the comments received from Chairperson Teft. But just to review them, Chair Teft recommends that either modification or changes be made to the recommended planning condition, or planning conditions, which are shown in REZO 1517. And essentially, to be more in compliance with the original CUP that the applicant is seeking to amend. Just to walk through them real quickly, number five is the only one that would be modified, and that is regarding eelgrass, that the decking for floating docks and slips should be no less than 40% or greater than 40%. No food or beverage service be offered or provided to tables. Staff's view of the recommended condition 15 is that this is accomplished through the provision of sign four, as shown on the sign plan, which says that there's no purchase necessary. Number 16, 10-foot bayside lateral access. And I do have some pictures of these, so I'll, myself and Scott went down to the lease site today, and we tried to take pictures of all of these items, so that the Planning Commission could review these items and see what their deliberation was on that. I'll get to those in just a second. 10-foot bayside lateral access, they do currently show on the plans, they have 10-foot access on the north side, outside of where the table area is. On the south side, where that southern building is, it was approved as at 8 feet. They could not go to 10 feet without removing part of the building. So they have not made, they have not added on to either of those two buildings to lessen than what they were previously approved at. Planning condition 17 discusses trash cans and refuse containers. 18, they currently have only one publicly accessible, or they only, they currently only have one restroom. The requirement was is that, or the condition suggested is that it be two publicly accessible restrooms. I actually was not in the restroom, because it's closed for the painting job, so I actually can't verify that it is publicly accessible. Condition 19, restriction on uses. The original CUP placed additional restrictions on top of the base zoning, the zoning's waterfront. And this was in 2001, where it said that 40% of uses were required to be for harbor-dependent Number 20, remove obstructions in the public view corridor, remove unpermitted signage, remove outdoor displays of merchandise, and remove unpermitted outdoor dining. And so, and as I said, these are in more detail in the letter that Chair Teft provided and that I gave to all of you before the meeting. So I'm just going to walk through about a dozen slides here, just so you can kind of see some images. This is, all of these are photos I took today, with the exception of this one. This one was provided by the applicant. And this shows earlier when there was the, the green metal tables there. They actually are not there today, because, again, of the painting that's happening. But this shows you the bayside lateral access. This area that you're looking at is 10. If the photographer in this photo turned around, you'd be facing the 8-foot area, which you'll see right here. So here is the 8-foot area that shows the bayside. This is at the southwest corner, looking north, and again, it does show the bayside. It also does currently show some chairs that are blocking the bayside access. It's unknown whether they are permanently located there, or if they were relocated from the painting job, but they are there today. Chair Teft mentioned in his comment letter regarding trash enclosures. Here is an example of one of the existing trash cans that's near the top of the gangway. It's a rubber trash can enclosed with, or surrounded by wood slots. This is an example of the trash that's on the street side, and this is indicative of all of the public trash cans that are along the Embarcadero. There are all these rectangle shapes, garbage, and then a recycling. These may be city-owned trash cans. Every lease site has the exact same one. For this lease site, what we did observe this afternoon is that there are a collection of rubber garbage cans throughout the lease site. There is a trash, a screen trash container that is, for the businesses, and it faces on Embarcadero, and that is current. on Embarcadero, and that is currently, you know, screened with a door. Here is a slide showing the bayside. This is looking toward the northwest, and you can see the existing kayaks stored upright. Walking down the gangway, and also in this area, you see some of the seawall kind of cracked and needing repair there. This is down at the bottom of the gangway and the kiosk structure that is proposed to be reconstructed. A little further away, I'm at the end of one of the dock slips. And, again, the stored kayaks, more seawall views there. Here is a slide from the street looking at the vertical axis, and Chair Teft did have some concerns about outdoor displays of merchandise, which were here. There's a Marilyn Monroe statue here. There appears to be blockages in the view corridor. Although, I will say that while I was there, I saw some tourists taking pictures of the Marilyn Monroe statue, so a couple and their young child. This is the street side, and, again, outdoor displays of merchandise that Teft mentions in his, excuse me, Chair Teft mentions in his comment letter. And so, staff did review the letter. We do have a couple of recommendations to offer as part of the planning commission's deliberations on Chair Teft's comment letter regarding, just for the conditions, and I've outlined them here, condition 15, staff would recommend that the recommendation for condition 15 be deleted regarding that no food or beverage service be offered or provided, as it is already accomplished with the provision of adjacent sign number four that states no purchase necessary adjacent to those public tables. Condition 16, which said that the applicant was, that the applicant shall provide lateral bay access along the entire western edge of the landside portion of the site, and that such lateral access shall be a minimum of 10 feet in width and shall be maintained clear of furniture or other obstructions. Staff would recommend that this proposed condition be deleted or modified to reference just the maintain clear of furniture or other obstructions portion because although they have 10 feet on the north side, they currently have eight feet on the south side with an existing building in the way. And then, condition 18 regarding the publicly accessible bathrooms, what staff would recommend is that the language of Chair Teft's recommended condition be added to add what's in quotes there on the screen, which is "or as otherwise agreed upon in city's lease with the leaseholder." Condition 19.
Can we go back to that one?
Sure.
Reason being is that the applicants indicated that the current lease that they have with the city has changed that requirement to only have one publicly available bathroom. And we haven't seen it yet because we literally just looked at it right before we came here. So, that's why we were requested to add that additional language in case that is the case, meaning that's a lease agreement that was over by the city council.
And then, the last one, condition 19. What Chair Teft had recommended is that the, that the condition state that the applicant shall prior to issuance of a building permit demonstrate to staff that in compliance with condition three of CUP 3099, and I'm paraphrasing here, that no less than 40% of the gross floor area of all structures on site is devoted to harbor-dependent and coastal-related uses, and no more than 60% of gross floor area of all structures on site is devoted to visitor-serving uses. What staff would recommend actually is based on the way that the lease site is today, and that it is a visitor-serving retail, and it's consistent with their waterfront master plan, is staff would actually recommend deleting proposed condition 19 and instead modifying CUP 3099, this portion of condition three, to actually remove the restriction on uses and that 40% be required for harbor-dependent. And the reason being is that staff feels that the way that this condition was worded was likely reflective of the era in which the CUP was approved back in 2001. Measure D covers areas north of Beach Street. This area has a waterfront zoning, and these visitor-serving uses are consistent with the waterfront zoning. By adding this condition, it essentially adds another layer of zoning uses on top of the base zoning, and it is really not necessary to have this additional restriction. So, staff would actually support modifying that, or removal of that CUP 3099, condition 13. And so, that would be for Planning Commission discussion and deliberation. And then, of course, as I stated in the earlier presentation, the last one was to Planning Commission 12 to delete the requirement that they pay for one parking and lo space. The project proposal, in fact, triggers requirement for three spaces. And staff's recommendation is that conditionally approve the project by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 1517 for the project depicted on plans received April 19, 2017. And I would point out that, just to be clear, this is a modification of a precise plan, so this would be a project that does not require city council approval. We are requesting that the Planning Commission modify the precise plan. Typically, the Planning Commission is used to the three-step process, Planning Commission Council, and then back to Planning Commission. In this case, we're modifying a precise plan, so this would be a one-public hearing shot. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Cindy. Before we get to questions, I'll ask if anyone has ex parte communications to report on this item.
I spoke with the owner or the operator of the business, the kayak business, and also with Gene on just the project.
And I spoke to the kayak operators as well, just looking at the property.
Very well. Then, with that, we will open it for questions for staff. Are there any questions for staff at this point? Jerry?
Couple of questions. On the, on the final site plan, what is the minimum dimension on the walkway on the west It didn't have any, didn't have any dimensions on.
Lateral access way?
Oh, okay. The, on the southwest portion?
No, on the, on the west, the west portion, the brick where they're, where they're taking down the, where they're putting in the sheet piles. There's a closed section by the kiosks, kiosk where it seems like it tightens up pretty much. What is that dimension there, the minimum dimension?
Oh. Okay, let me see. Hold on a second. So, do you mean the area where the gate is, where if you're in the southwest corner and then you go down the gangway?
No, right behind the kiosk.
Oh, behind the kiosk.
And then, also, where you have the patio, that raised patio in that south, southwest corner.
Okay, I think I have a picture of this.
Can we go to the plan?
It's the location where you have sign three.
Yeah, I don't have that dimension. I don't have a scale with me. The applicant may be able to answer that.
Okay. And then, is that, it looks like part of that raised patio, especially that, that corner, is on this lease site, or is it on the other lease site?
Do you mean part of this patio here?
No, on the other, on the south, southwest corner.
The raised patio from Off the Hook.
From Off the Hook, right.
Yeah, it does, it looks like, it appears by these plans that it extends across the lease line perhaps.
Yeah.
It does appear to, by the, on the plans to do that.
Yeah, it seems like that's a real tight dimension also. And with the, with the railing and the glassed-in portion, that really closes in that, that section of the walkway. So, I'm wondering who's responsible for that. And then, also, where do we sit with the adjacent lease site renovations from the Off the Hook?
The council authorized moving forward with the RFP. So, we've identified the party that's going to be moving forward. What they didn't do is authorize the consent of landowner. They instead requested some additional information be brought back before they would approve the consent of landowner. One of them being related to financials, wanted to tighten that up, and so, that's due back. So, we haven't gotten those middles back, and the item has not been scheduled back for council, but I'm sure it'll happen within the next couple of months.
Okay. So, should we be concerned about tie-ins on this harbor walk with that, that property and that RFP?
No, that project, that project will be required as part of their permitting to, to connect, and you're not going to have this raised patio thing in that location.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions for staff at this point? So, just to, just to clarify, the southern border of this lease site is a foot or two from the building. Is that correct? Okay, so that...
Yes, that's correct.
The vast majority of that dining patio is on the Off the Hook lease site?
It is on Off the Hook, and that, that property's also scheduled for redevelopment, so we'll be able to fix that issue as part of that process.
Well, if there are no other questions for staff, we will open the public comment period for this. We typically offer the applicant or applicant representative a chance to speak first.
Good evening, Chair Teft and Commissioners. My name is Kathy Novak, and I'm here this evening representing the applicant for the 845 Embarcadero Road project known as the Boatyard. Before I begin, I'd like to thank staff for their time and assistance with this project and their recommendation for approval. This project is relatively simple, and staff has provided a detailed project overview, so I will be brief with my comments and just go over a few items. The main focus of this project is to install a new seawall with sheet piles to repair a portion of the seawall which started to collapse in the fall of 2015. Emergency repair work was done at the time to shore up the failing wall and provide a temporary fix while the applicant had time to request permits for a new and permanent wall. While the repair work concentrated on the northern section of the site, the southern side has also been identified as needing repair. Therefore, this project will install approximately 74 lineal feet of sheet pile to repair the areas. In addition, there's rock riprap that will need to be stabilized and repaired. Both the northern and southern sections of the riprap will be repaired by removing small rocks and debris and replaced with a new rock where needed. The area encompasses approximately 1,000 square feet each. This area is, repair is necessary to protect the existing revetment towards the harbor walk and to also lock in new sheet pile wall. The second part of this project includes modification to the existing dock system in a couple of ways. First, the existing floating docks are set within the water lease site at a slight angle. Since these docks will need to be temporarily removed for the construction access to the seawall area, the replacement will allow the contractor to set the docks squarely within the lease site. Second, the other dock modifications will include the following things. One, which will replace and repair the head float, and will be eight feet wide plus the kiosk area. It now ranges from seven to eight feet plus the kiosk area. Two, it will extend three existing finger slips to 50 feet and add one new 50-foot finger slip. Three, it'll add one new floating dock, approximately 410 square feet, to be located between the northern and middle finger slip areas for the kayak and paddleboard storage. Four, it will add one new floating dock, approximately 340 square feet, adjacent to the other new dock. This dock will be a low-floating dock that will be used for easier access to launch the kayaks and the paddleboards. Five, it will remove and replace seven existing piles with new steel piles to secure the head float and the finger slips. Six, it will replace the existing kiosk areas on the dock with approximately 144 square feet of space for the businesses. And last, it will replace the existing gangway in the same location. The third component of this project includes adding two small areas of the harbor walk that are currently landscaped areas west of the existing railing. These landscape areas will be removed, and this will increase pedestrian area on the existing harbor walk. Last, the existing metal tables in the northern patio area will be replaced with reconcrete tables and benches that are ADA accessible. The inclusion of these tables will also provide for a 10-foot harbor walk in this location. The last item I'd like to highlight for the Commissioners tonight is the attention to the construction timing and the public access closures. The landside portion of the project will require temporary closure of the harbor walk areas defined on the plan sheet number five for the entire duration of the seawall construction, which is estimated to be about two months. An unobstructive fence, unobtrusive fence, excuse me, or equivalent measure will be there to delineate the construction areas. Since there is no alternative route for the public pedestrian access along the waterside during construction, the public will only be allowed to walk up to the construction fence and then will need to exit via the same way that they came in. Appropriate signage informing the public that the access way is temporarily closed for construction will be placed at the northern or southern and the eastern entry points. I understand that there's been some concerns with the length of time for these closures, so I'd like to take a moment and tell you why. There is an extensive amount of work that needs to be done to repair the seawall. The pavers in the harbor walk area will need to be removed in order to access the area to excavate small debris, to perform the riprap repair, and install the helico piles or the deadman anchors that support the seawall. Once the project, the construction is complete, the pavers will be reinstalled. The applicant is very sensitive to the closure since his tenants will also be affected by this, so he will have the contractor working expeditiously to finish and open this area up again. As a sidebar to this, I want to mention that some of the closed area will be used for the construction laydown. This will be the pavers and the dirt excavated from the site, which will need to be stockpiled on-site. The other materials and equipment will be stored on the work barge or at Associated Pacific's yard. The only material that may be problematic is the sheet piles because of the length. If need be, the contractor will work with the city of Morro Bay to temporarily store the piles in the parking lot near the Associated Pacific down at the south end of the Embarcadero. In conclusion, the applicant has worked closely with the city over the past few months to design a repair for the failing seawall, to repair the rock riprap, and install new and refurbished docks, floats, kiosk, and other public amenities. So, on behalf of Mr. Branch, I would respectfully ask for the commission's approval of this project as presented. This concludes my prepared presentation. Before I completely finish, I would like to address some of the comments from the commission that I received late this afternoon. First, condition number five in the translucent grading. The California Eelgrass Mitigation Policy, or the KEMP, is in place to minimize impacts to eelgrass and provide a mechanism for mitigating impacts. The KEMP defines eelgrass habitat and also excludes, quote, "areas of unsuitable environmental conditions such as hard-bottom substrates, shaded locations, or areas that extend in depths below those supporting eelgrass," end quote. Since the purpose of the use of the translucent grading is to minimize impacts or mitigate impacts, it would be appropriate to use the grading in locations where eelgrass exists or habitat areas surrounding the eelgrass areas are, but not in areas where eelgrass will not grow or is unsuitable habitat. In addition, you will not be able to have 100% light penetration because the flotation needed for the docks cannot be made of translucent materials. There was an eelgrass study, or survey done in this project, and most of the area under the KEMP standards is unsuitable habitat, shaded, or too deep to support the eelgrass growth. Therefore, the requirement to install translucent materials for the entire dock project is not warranted or required under the KEMP, so I would respectfully ask that the condition remain as is. Second, condition number 16. The north side of the harbor walk will have a 10-foot access way. However, the southern side has previously been permitted and was constructed at eight feet. As I mentioned in my presentation, there are new area that will widen the harbor walk on the south, south side. Since this has been previously approved at the eight-foot, I would ask that the recommended condition language be changed to reflect this. Third, condition number 17. I believe the original condition was regards to the screening of the dumpster or roll-off style trash enclosure and not the specific individual public trash containers. As a side note, the applicant is actually in the process of purchasing and installing new public trash containers for the site, so we will be getting rid of the Rubbermaid style trash cans soon while he's doing the painting project. Fourth, the condition number 19, I would like to respect, request that the original condition number three requiring the percentages of floor space dedicated for specific uses be deleted as it does not seem appropriate to limit those uses now. Fifth, and condition 20, I would just like to point out, the proposed new tables and benches are 32 inches high, and that is because they are ADA-designed tables and will require specific heights, so therefore, an allowance for these tables should be provided. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. The project contractor and the architect are here as well, that they could answer some technical questions. And then, maybe, Jerry, I can just take a moment... And then maybe Jerry, I can just take a moment to try to answer your questions. The glass section on the southern side actually encroaches, it's the off-the-hook glass patio, but it actually encroaches into this lease site a couple of three feet. I can't remember exactly what it is. So as Scott said, that in the future when that lease site redevelops, then that encroachment will be removed off of this lease site. The other dimension from the kiosk, I wasn't totally understanding exactly what dimension that you were looking for, so maybe you can help me out with that just a moment and I can answer that question for you?
It was basically the walkway dimension from the building to the railing behind the kiosk on the west side.
It's going to be eight feet at that southern corner right there. I scaled that off and it does, when it goes...
Where the sheet piles come in and come closest to the building there and pretty much the center of the site. It looked like that was pretty tight there. So is that eight or 10 feet?
Eight feet. And then as you go down south a little bit, you're going to have it open up, well actually wider than 10 because that triangle area which is now planter that's on the west side of the railing is now going to go away because the rail is going to follow the sheet pile wall and so you'll have an actual extension westward in that particular area.
Okay. And then, so essentially those narrow sections are eight feet instead of 10 feet?
Yes.
On both of those? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Good. Glad I could answer any other questions and thank you for your time.
Okay, I'll wait till after public comment for more questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak to this item this evening? Seeing none then, we will proceed to any questions for the applicant or applicant representatives? Okay, Kathy?
Could you give us a historical perspective on this site? If memory serves me right, this was actually, prior to the construction of these buildings, this was actually a haul-out facility on the Embarcadero back in the day.
Sure. Starting actually at the Otter Rock. The Otter Rock was the old machine shop and then the machine shop was taken down and the Otter Rock was permitted and built. And then a gentleman, Ralph Gunther, had this lease site and actually where the off-the-hook is now was one entire lease site that Ralph had at the time. The northern portion of this lease site was the old Marine Ways. There was a little bit of a floating dock that was on the north side of the Marine Ways and there was a floating dock on the south side of the Marine Ways as well. So in the south of the Marine Ways, there was a two-story building and that was the building that caught on fire during the night and was then ultimately replaced. And then eventually Ralph ended up selling the lease site. He broke it off. He sold one portion, which is off-hook, to somebody else and then the Simons bought this one and then the Simon subsequently sold the lease site to Mr. Branch. So at the time of the permits, I think that they were thinking because the Marine Ways was there, that that's really the reason why they were going down the path of having the restriction on the marine-related uses in those new buildings. I remember at the time when they were talking about it was, you know, going to be difficult to manage just because, you know, what do you put in there?
Yeah, that was my recollection too and that was where I was heading with that question.
Yeah, and the Marine Ways was getting difficult. You know, there was a very large rock out in the bay and I remember that they had to be very careful at times that they would pull boats out of the water. They had to do it at high tide because of this rock. And so sometimes you'd be finding boats pulling out at, you know, 1 o'clock in the morning just because of the tides for the day, but it got to be difficult. And then the vacant lot that's across the street on the Embarcadero was also owned by Ralph at the time and that's where they did a lot of the, they pulled the boats across the street too and did some of the storage over there.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was remembering. I was hoping you'd jog my memory on that.
Yeah, good.
Thanks.
Any other questions for...
Question. Where the harbor walk narrows to eight feet, is that a portion of the seawall underneath that area, is that a portion of the seawall that's going to be rebuilt?
Actually, if you could visualize the harbor walk being this way and then at the edge, the west edge of the harbor walk, this starts the rock riprap and then it will go down like this toward the bay. So it's right on the edge. It's the top corner of the riprap and the lease site starts with a landside for the harbor walk.
Yeah. I guess my question addresses, and I'm not even sure it's a good idea, but if we wanted to widen the harbor walk at that area, it could be done without...
It would be a major deal because you've got the rock riprap there already, so then you'd have to come in and figure out how to design some sort of a cantilevered system to go over the top of the riprap because you just can't, you know, put, fill in on top of the riprap and have it support the harbor walk. And so it'd be a lot of engineering to try to figure that out.
Okay.
And it was done at eight feet because it used to be, well, the city's, LCP right now does still say eight feet and it was, I don't know, like three or four years ago, the coastal commission started coming in and saying, "Well, we want 10 feet." So that's how we got on the 10-foot was because it came from the coastal commission.
Kathy, can you explain to me the thinking behind the kiosk with the two rental spaces in it? The old building probably has about 100% more glass in it than this one. These are really small windows. I was wondering, are there going to be billboards outside or merchandise or why are they so different? Like if you look at here, the window is almost adjacent to the door, comes down almost to the handle height. And I think on the new elevations, if you look at them, the windows are maybe half that high. It looks like they're really high up on the wall, like you're either intending to put something down low like signage, which we're not seeing, or some kind of retail inside that would take advantage of the wall space. Is there something like that going on that changes the proportion of these things?
You know, I'm going to have to default to Mr. Branch or Cliff on that to answer that question because I do not know. I'm sorry.
Cindy, if you go, I think you've got another slide of the side because I think the side window is also, maybe you can pick it up in that one. The side windows are a little more generous than the ones that are shown too. I'm just curious because this seems to me to be, I know it's a simple structure. I don't want to rake the project over the coals over something like this, but this could be either a gem or it could just be very simple. And this is very simple, but it has lots of glass and the new one is a fraction of that.
And actually, if I'm looking at it and I see those kayaks leaning up against the wall, the building there, I'd rather have the windows up higher so you don't actually smack it with a kayak too.
Maybe.
Come up to the microphone.
I'm Tony Foster. I have rock kayak. I have the business, the kayaks down there. And when the wall came down, I actually had a rack system alongside of the building there with five kayaks along the side right there. When the wall came down and the dock actually rode up on top of the wall, we were actually elevated several feet until it actually broke down. We've had to cut part of the dock itself there, the corner there, so we wouldn't get caught on the wall going up and down with the tides. So, yeah, that's kind of just trying to just keep a little bit of inventory still on the dock because I've had to downsize. So that's where that area is right there with those two boats side by side. I don't know if I answered any properly the question or not, but what was the concern again?
Just the volume of glass.
The windows, you know, that was just something that, this was done in 2003. That building was actually constructed, the kiosk. We did that just for ventilation, just to make sure we had plenty of windows so it derventilated and that was purely that. There wasn't any sort of set sort of thing whether how many windows or whatever to have on there, so it was just purely to have a view and also to have ventilation. So the other kiosk only has one window and that's just in the front. On the right kiosk, mine has one on the front, side, back, and so there's four actual windows on the kiosk there. Wasn't any retail done though? We don't do retail there.
I was just concerned because I think this is a better look than what's proposed.
I do too. I do too. I told them, I said, "They can keep all those windows because those are expensive" right there. I always hope they would use those windows and hopefully put them on the kiosk, but they're not, whatever.
Well, for a second, I was just concerned, like if you were concerned about some kind of vandalism or robbery or theft or something like that, that you were going to a different type of window. Because I think if, we've got people wondering...
I did get broken once, but they came in through the door, bam! So we didn't remedy that, but that did happen once unfortunately.
I won't ask how you remedied that.
So, yes.
That's just a concern. I appreciate the materials, especially the copper, which is a very nice material. I just question the elevations, that's all.
If there's more windows in there, I wouldn't mind, but anyway.
I wonder if the architect would like to speak to that issue?
Mr. Branch said he'd be happy to talk to you about that if you'd like, so.
Hi, my name is Cliff Branch. I'm the owner. A lot of thought has gone in this. We did, two years ago today, the seawall collapsed. We've been working with it pretty extensively with the city council for two years. City manager and planning and put a lot of thought and effort to, in, there's, let's just say we've worked very intimately with the city council to try and get a situation where it's good for everybody. There was some liability issues and this revolves them. Anyway, what I did as an owner is we wanted something that was more aesthetic. We just went to functionality, talked to Tony, talked to the other people. What's stored inside is basically life jackets, paddles, and so forth. They need to storage inside. So if you have a window come down low, you don't necessarily want it, it's not too good for storage. It also, you know, people will look in there. I think the new thing, virtually, it's the same space basically. Instead of having two separate units with junk in between, we just made one structure with a wall down the middle. It's basically the same size. You know, it just is what it is. There's no change in function. The only thing the city did was require that these have commercial sprinklers inside in case of something burst into flame. So, and I'd be glad to answer any other questions if anybody has any questions on this.
So what I'm gathering, what I'm gathering from what you're saying is that this is really intended for storage of equipment and materials not to be inhabited by people, not to have people inside of it, you know, for any extended period.
No, I mean, it's pretty much, they're very tiny and, I mean, they're big closets. And so this is where basically life jackets, paddles, you know, if somebody goes out and they've got something, a customer wants to store something, they can be locked up, et cetera. They're just functional. So if there's any other questions about any of this, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not sure who would be the right person, Paul, Gene, or you, Cliff. It seems like as these sheet piles go back in and undulate back in there, there is a potential to go from sheet pile cap to sheet pile cap with a span grading there so that you could actually increase that walkway from eight foot to 10 foot.
I think Paul would be better to speak on. Paul Gillan with Associated Pacific Contractors.
Hello, I'm Paul Gillan with Associated Pacific. We did look at widening the cap and offsetting the railing slightly. The cap will be flush with the walkway, so that'll give us as much space as we possibly can get. I think we could probably even move the railing a little bit farther towards the outer edge of the cap.
Yeah.
And maximize that space.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, where I could see a problem with the coastal commission coming back on you and if you could solve this problem fairly quickly or fairly easily by cantilevering that cap over and putting the railing to the outside so you could get your 10 feet, I think we could solve the problem without creating more delays for you.
I think that if we get into much more of a cantilever process, this is sheet pile, so structurally we'd probably have to make some changes if we're going to cantilever more than about six inches past the outer edge of the sheet pile.
Okay.
I'd have to look on the plans more closely to see what that would give us in terms of distance, but it looks like that would probably add another 12 inches, could add another 12 inches.
Okay, I think anything we could get would be helpful at those points. Okay, thanks.
If there are no other questions then, we will close public comment, bring the item back to commission for discussion. Let's pick on Joe.
Well, I think this kind of activity, this kind of improvement is exactly what Morro Bay needs, so I applaud that, particularly when I heard the kayak launching would be from a slightly lower dock. Having used the kayak, or I've gotten out of the kayak on occasion, I appreciate that that'll make things considerably better. And of course, the damage, when anyone who looks here, the damage is obvious and the repairs are necessary, so again, I applaud you taking things at hand and fixing this Widening the lateral access, I'm not even sure that that's an improvement or not. I suppose for the sake of consistency, we should try to achieve 10 feet or as close as we can. And if it's, can be done without too much difficulty or reengineering, I suppose that's a good idea. The modifications that are listed, I think I agree with all of them. And the eelgrass issue, you know, I think I'll maybe reserve that for later comments. I just, we've talked about this eelgrass issue a number of times and an alternative way of doing it and I wonder if we couldn't maybe sort of settle on how to, what should be a first step in maybe doing something that's a little bit more rational? What I mean is, and I guess this is, I don't know if this is a coastal commission requirement, but it seems that there are diving and surveys that typically find the obvious, which is there's not much eelgrass close to the Embarcadero and it doesn't thrive there. And to spend this money to keep finding that out seems a little silly. Better we should take that money and put it further into the bay where we could actually get the eelgrass to thrive and do some good for the entire bay. But that's, I realize that's not, you know, an issue for this application, but we should maybe talk about it. That's really all my thoughts on it.
Jerry?
Okay, well, the repairs are obviously needed and my biggest concerns too are to get as much width and to eliminate as many of those choke points along the harbor walk as possible. And I think there's, without too much engineering, we can not even change the existing sheet pile and, you know, either span across there with another girder or, you know, cantilever out the sheet, cantilever out the cap a little ways. To get as much as we can, hopefully 10 feet. Also, I'd like to see some kind of a condition, I don't know how we can condition the adjacent property to remove that raised patio.
You can't.
We can?
We can.
So then how, then at this point, then it would pretty much be on this property owner to remove the existing raised patio?
No, when that project comes forward for redevelopment, it'll be done as part of that project. It'll be removed from the lease site.
Okay, but we can't condition the other property to do that?
You cannot. You do not have an application for the other property in front of you.
Right.
Yeah, correct. You can't, you cannot do that.
So...
That is not a listed item on tonight's agenda. You have all those problems.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not something that's going to be missed. When that project comes forward, they're going to be demoing all of the materials and none of that stuff could be out there anyway. It violates the Waterfront Master Plan.
Well, there needs to be an entire lateral access across that adjoining property. There's none currently.
Right, exactly.
There's a whole bunch of other issues that are going to be addressed.
Okay, okay. I'll sleep easier with that. And then I'd also like to see, once again, we have the same problem again and again coming before us, that in these view corridors, there's obstructions and people want to maximize their retail space so they put things out. You know, it's really understandable, but I think we need some kind of a city standardized brass maritime-looking plaque or something that says, that can be attached to the building at these view corridors and it doesn't have to be large, but that says this is a view corridor that's required under the conditional use permit or therefore, and has to remain open and unobstructed. the conditional use permit or therefore, and has to remain open and unobstructed. So, because once again, if we rely on code compliance or code enforcement officers, it's not getting done. And you can walk anywhere through the embankadaro and you see wind screens coming across walkways, coming across, you know, access points, you can see railings going up with, you know, the block. And this makes it so that people do not feel comfortable walking through their public access areas. So I think, I would like to see another sign, and I hate signs, you know, but I would like to see another sign in the view corridor saying that this is a required view corridor and needs to remain open and unobstructed and for complaints, call, you know, and list a phone number. So, and it doesn't have to be large, it doesn't have to be obtrusive, you know, three by five or six by 10 something, but it needs to be stated there so that people don't have the excuse of, I didn't know. Because it needs to be stated. And then I guess, you know, we can go through these other issues one by one. Okay.
Richard?
Can I ask you a question, Scott? I'm going to bring up this eelgrass issue again, okay? And I feel that, what we have is SB 1363. And that was passed by Mawning and the Ocean Protection Council, and it has to do with addressing ocean acidification and hypoxia, which is really, if you, you know, get a pulse of what's happening in California with the upwelling and the sea level, I mean, climate change, this is serious issues. Now, I look at, when I walked over there, there was a little section of a grate with the little lighting going through there. How in reality, how functional, has there anybody, has there been any kind of a baseline assessment on how actually effective something like that is?
There are studies out there that address how those things work and how well they work. I've not, I've not read any of them specifically. I'm aware that they exist, you know, and could actually, you can find them online when you search for them. I've come across them from time to time looking for other things. But, so I don't have specific information related to it, but there's, and there's a couple of different methods that you can, you know, provide light through to the system.
Yeah, because like, intuitively, it seems not the best way to deal with things as far as what I could tell.
We have, I mean, rightfully so. We have a tough situation as it relates to eelgrass, the applicant's required to comply with the camp. We're trying to really rely on the camp now a little bit more. Because it has, it's a little bit better to find now. And I think that's, not getting overly specific, you know, with our conditioning, really relying more on some of the flexibility that's afforded in the camp. So we're not overly conditioning the project and overly burdening the applicant beyond what's otherwise required by the camp. I mean, because they have to comply with that anyway.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're trying to do that, and we're also, I mean, outside of this project, you know, we have the subcommittee of the Harbor Advisory Board that's looking at coming up with a protocol. In fact, we met with them internally recently. And looking at, you know, what we do initially, like normally, we were doing full-blown dive studies of what was out there in the beginning. And then you, and then really what matters is what's there when they're getting ready to construct. And so why spend all the money upfront like that other than maybe just have a dive by, have them go in there? Is it present on the sign, is it not? What's the approximate size of it? That's about all we would need because it's transitory, it moves. It might be there, it might not be there, it might be, you know, quadruple the size when they finally get around a building because the process it takes us for that concept, precise Coastal Commission, you know, back through the whole thing, takes a long time and things change over that. I mean, that's like a two-year process minimum typically.
You know, and you bring up an interesting point, Scott. So you have the subcommittee. Have you, are you guys in any kind of dialogue about really putting together some kind of a eelgrass bank someplace like down by the old boatyard or, you know, by, you know, the landing dock, you know?
The subcommittee is kicking the tires on what that potentially would look like and then talking to the resource agencies as well. And, I mean, it's, somebody has to take responsibility for it and it's unlikely to be the city at this point, given the financial situation the city's in. So it seems it would likely have to be someone else, NEP maybe, or someone else, it just depends. So that's what they're talking about. They're in preliminary conversations about this right now. I mean, you know, as it moves forward through the, you know, through the year, they'll continue to work through this and we might end up with something that's workable. We'll see.
Yeah, because, you know, when you, you know, in discussion with the Ocean Protection Council, there's grants, there's loans available for these kind of issues. And I'm, I'm in total agreement with, like, the challenges that the applicant has and then having to modify and do compromises for this. And I think that there's a lot better way of dealing with the eelgrass issue than what's being currently being.
I think anybody that has to deal with eelgrass things, there's a lot, there must be a better way to do it than the way we do it now.
Okay, so let me just put it this way. I'm encouraged that you guys are at least in dialogue with Harbor, at least trying to talk about maybe getting, you know, something moving in that direction. So this is not a, you know, a recurring issue. The other, the other thing that I, I'm in agreement with other commissioners with regarding, we should try to, within reason, try to maximize the axis, the lateral axis. And then, the other thing I did is I, looking at this little chaos, you know, this is like when you're, one of the, one of the things that, like, when, you know, this is going back years when the Coastal Act was going through and one of my wife, my wife was out in the ocean and she was like looking, you know, out toward land and where you see, and that's one of the reasons why we have the Coastal Commission, what are we seeing there from that perspective? And so when I look at, one of the things, the building, for instance, I think that from an architectural standpoint, you know, we recently had reviewed a, you know, it wasn't that big of a deal, but it was a little laundry building, you know, that, and that was, that was recently we looked at. And the creativity, you know, to try to get some, some interest into that building. I think that, and then when I talked to one of the fellows, you know, that's on the Harbor, he directed me to go to, by the tee pier, and there's a kayak building there that's storage. And the roofline is made so that it kind of looks like, it's of interest. And I think that we can make this a, a point of interest, you know, a little more character, a little more artistic thought into what we're putting in there. And then that'll, and, you know, keep the functionality, obviously, of it. And I would like to see maybe something, something in that genre, you know? The other thing regarding the, and I would, and I'm open for swinging either, you know, the discussion on this, but regarding the benches and the tables, you know, I was maybe considering just benches in that area as opposed to benches and tables. And then the other thing is, if I can get a little bit more, Cindy, if you could give me a little more, I'm a little confused on the parking. Okay, the 116 linear feet, I'm a little confused on that, and maybe you can just give me a little clarity there.
Sure thing. I'll take you back to the slide here that is the site plan. Let's see. So here, so, oh, sorry, wrong pointer. So the parking ordinance says one parking space is required for each 35 lineal feet of boat tie-up area. When the plans were drawn and on the first page of the plans, it talks about, it itemizes each slip length, there's eight slips, 211 lineal feet, and this is 391. And so in the staff report, I did a calculation, that's a difference of 180, divided it by 35 and said, oh, there is 180 new lineal feet of docks. And so therefore-
Oh, because of extension?
Yeah, requires parking. What the applicant's representative requested clarification from is she pointed out that if you continue to read the zoning ordinance, it says of boat tie-up area. And so in this area, this is where the kayak launch float is. You can't tie a boat in that area. This area, the width of this head float from here to here, you're not going to tie up a boat area here. So in reality, you would be counting this length and this length, and all the areas where you could tie up. So, if I go back to the calculation, here, it shows the slip length of each of these slips. And then, in these areas where it was lengthened to 50 feet, and then in some areas, it got shorter because we had to subtract out the kayak launch area. So it gives us a difference, and we add up all those numbers, and now we have a net increase of 116 lineal feet. And so, I mean, and then just, you know, parking it at one per 35 of actual tie-up area, 116. So we get three, we get, actually, we get a slight bit of a fraction, like 3.1. Zoning ordinance allows us to do rounding, so thus the number three.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, a little more clarity on some things. Okay, there, in this provisions for this lease, and it was a boatyard and stuff, there's provisions that you have to have something to do with harbor use. And that's what the kayak rental provides, right? Or is that, as opposed to like, you know, you're selling coffee or whatever? Is there a percentage of the lease space that has to be used for that, or, how does that work?
So currently with the CUP is they are required that 40% has to be harbor-dependent uses. So they meet that with the kayak rental and the electric boat rental. The 60% that's visitor-serving, that would be the coffee shop. I think there's like a Hollywood shop, and there's random things. I have noticed-
So, that condition applies to the structures. So, want to clarify that. We have these other uses out here that we might be compliant, but they're not inside the buildings. So hence the reason that we have a problem there. And we think, you know, from a staff standpoint, that the market should drive what's there because most of that stuff's visitor-serving things, and that condition probably doesn't need to be there. And staff recommendation in looking at it, you know, Chair Tiff obviously brings it up in the letter as a compliance issue, he's correct. And our thought process in looking at it is why is it there? I mean, let the market drive what goes in those buildings as a visitor-serving area and let's just, you know, X out the condition. It's unneeded.
So you're saying that the condition for harbor use is not needed at all?
In this location, no.
In this location, not at all?
No, I mean, we have, I mean, yeah, I don't, I think you want to let the market drive what goes in there. It's nice that they, I think it's great that they're improving the kayak rental facility and have the launch there. Those things are kind of tricky sometimes. I like that concept. I've seen those in other places. They seem to work really nicely. So I think that's a fantastic improvement that they're putting in. And that's sort of harbor-dependent, obviously, using kayaks on land, so. Yeah, so I mean, I think it has them, I just, I don't, that condition is talking about the buildings, and so what are the buildings? 40% of those aren't being used for that type of purpose. So I don't think we want to encourage, you know, the owner, who's right now going to be spending quite a bit of money on repair of the seawall, it's a very expensive repair. And it doesn't add square footage, and it doesn't add lease space, and it doesn't add revenue. You'd be looking at telling him, okay, you need to kick out some of your tenants, until someone comes along that wants to come in here and would be compliant with that. I don't think we want vacant lease spaces over here, I think we want fully spaces. So that's sort of where our staff was coming from in its thought process. You can choose to agree or disagree, that's certainly up to the prerogative of the planning commission, but from staff standpoint, that's why our recommendation is what it is.
You don't, in your recommendation, you don't feel that risks, like, for instance, the kayak business by not having that condition, you just-
Kayak business is a permitted use.
Yeah, but it doesn't, like, for instance, I can't think of a scenario, but if you don't have a condition that protects, like, you have to have 40% harbor use, you don't, you don't-
So we already have zoning on the site that tells you what you can put there.
Okay.
And so that already does that. I think what Cindy was saying was actually right. It's like another layer of land use you put on top of it with that condition. I think maybe at the time, we were a little more sensitive about the uses that were going on perhaps, but we have a good mix there and, I mean, it seems to work okay. And it's up to the planning commission, though, I mean, it's-
Yeah, so this is a, like Kathy said, that's why I asked her to bring the history up. This was a hundred, almost 100% maritime use site. And so there was actually some concern about, you know, t-shirt, tattoo parlors going in where it used to be a haul-out facility. So that's what drove-
The waterfront.
That's what drove this zoning and this condition. So right now, I guess it's dependent on us, is we think it's still appropriate or not.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Yeah, understanding that if it is appropriate, then you'll have to, you'll be kicking out tenants. Okay. Michael?
Well, I appreciate that, you know, this has to be some of the most money spent for the least bang of your dollar.
Undoubtedly.
This is, this is something, I imagine that wall is part of the '30s renovation of the edge of the harbor that WPA may have started, and they probably did a little bit more work on it in the '40s, I guess. But, you know, it's, this is something that every leaseholder is going to have to come to grips with at some point or another. The wall isn't just going to work. So, to me, what's interesting is I don't, I don't think the harbor has a consistency, I don't think it has to have a consistency for a lot of things. I'm more concerned about things like a consistent kit of parts than I am any particular shape. I think the zigzags and the pieces that they're making more accessible, I think that's, I think that's laudable. I don't have that much problem with the eight feet, but I do think, though, that if they're putting a slab in there that's going to go on top of steel, the steel's probably better off if the concrete protects it, and the railing's probably better off relative to the concrete if it's on the outside of the concrete instead of driven through the concrete for support. So I like what was offered by the owner and his staff in terms of, you know, extending the six inches plus or minus with the rail on the outside. I think that's an easy win-win. I have concerns, like Commissioner Sodowsky, about the building, the one that he's quoting, that's the kayak shelter, the little hyperbolic parabloid roof there is probably, that's probably the best building in Morro Bay, in my humble opinion. It really is. And we don't have very many strong buildings, but, you know, that's a beautiful piece where the roof looks like it's floating. Now, it's also isolated, it's away from the edge, this is embedded against the, I'm not asking for anything like that here. I do think, though, those windows to make it a little more like it is now are more friendly. I think if it ever does become something where some person has to be in there, I don't know what they're selling, it could be t-shirts or giving tattoos to somebody, I don't know. But whatever is in there, it would benefit from a window that's a little bit bigger, like the ones that we have now. I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel, but I'd be happy if we just kept the wheel kind of the way it was on that one. The thing that kind of makes me crazy are the trash cans, the seminist vest, are the trash cans and the, all the other chachkas that are here, fire hose cases, are those standard for the harbor front? Or are we reinventing the wheel on every one of those? I think it's fire extinguisher cabinets, all sorts of things are on these drawings. There's no standard for that? Every project's standing on its own as to who to specify?
So the trash cans that are on the street side, those rectangular ones I had a picture of- of, those appear to be standard. About a month ago, I drove the entire Embarcadero and tried to find every single trash can, and they were identical. What's not identical is that it would appear like there's a collection of Rubbermaid garbage cans. I mean, there's like one outside the coffee shop, and it's probably just, you know, they're somewhat haphazardly put there by each of the tenants because throughout your coffee cup, that kind of thing. That doesn't appear to be standard, but the applicant's representative did say he's in the middle of, you know, purchasing new garbage cans.
Those are my only real comments. I'll defer to my colleagues about discussion of Dr. Teff's list here. And I'm open, given the amount that they're spending here, to, on the, on the basic infrastructure that doesn't give them much return right away, for helping, you know, defer costs and the ideas of the parking that are advantageous to them.
Well, let's talk about parking first, I guess. Honestly, I don't care, to tell you the truth. I think it's a moot point because I think the whole concept of onsite parking in the Embarcadero area is a dinosaur that's well on its way to extinction. So if we were to actually impose something on this project, it's very likely something that we would have to be undoing when we, you know, undo the whole onsite parking issue. The pedestrian access, the length of time that that is, that that is obstructed, again, to me, it's not a major issue. It's going to take, how long it takes, if it takes 45 days, it's 45 days, if it's two extra weeks, it's two extra weeks, you know. So I'm okay with leaving it at 60 days. I don't, I'm not real enthusiastic about necessarily changing that. The width of the lateral access, I think perhaps we should just say that it should be maximized and be as close to 10 feet as workable and allow this solution to happen. Frankly, the biggest issue with the, with the lateral access along the southern half of the property has been the fact that street furniture is placed in that area, narrows it really to more like five and a half feet, street furniture and planters. So a great deal could be done to open that up simply by complying with the waterfront master plan. Item number 15, the service of food and beverage at these three tables, I would be in favor of keeping that requirement. And the reason is, I think that if you have a sign that says you don't have to buy anything, but you have waiters that are serving people at those tables, you're giving mixed messages, okay? You're saying, we're saying that you don't have to buy anything to sit here, but you better buy something, you know? So I think in order to keep them being, you know, and there is no table service there currently. You go inside, you get your coffee, come out, sit at the table. So we're not changing anything, we're simply maintaining the situation as it is now. So I, you know, in terms of, in terms of the rest of these issues, you know, it is, it is the responsibility of the project sponsor to make sure that this site is maintained in compliance with the conditional use permit, okay? This has not happened at this site, okay? If I read condition number two of CUP 3099, it says, and I'm going to abbreviate a little bit, "The applicant shall ascertain and comply with all requirements as part of this project, including but not limited to the Moro Bay Municipal Code, programs and policies contained in the Certified Coastal Land Use Plan and the General Plan for the City of Moro Bay." So it is the responsibility of the applicant to maintain this project in compliance with the codes of the city. What I see out, what I've seen out there over the last few years, okay, I've seen, number one, a proliferation of small casual signs being placed in all kinds of locations. I'm going to ask Scott. Scott, how many sign permit applications have we received from that site in the last two years?
Zero. Have we had any? Did we get one? Maybe one for the, yeah, maybe one?
So perhaps one, of those several dozen signs that have appeared, perhaps one is legal, okay? That's unacceptable, that just can't be. And it's not an enforcement issue, it's a matter of doing, you know, complying with what you said you're going to comply with. In terms of outdoor sales of merchandise, there's a process for that. You need a minor use permit, okay? How many minor use permits have we had applied for, for outdoor sales of merchandise?
None that I'm aware of.
So 100% not legal. Dining areas, two dining areas there, both, an outdoor dining area requires a minor use permit. How many minor use permits have been issued? So, you know, and even in terms of this 40% harbor-dependent, I get it, I get it. It's, in my opinion, is totally inappropriate. It makes no sense in this area. But you don't just say, we'll blow it off, we don't like it, we'll blow off that provision. You come, say, it doesn't work for us, can you change it? And we'll say, sure, and it'll be changed, and we'll all be legal. So I, you know, I, I, all of these conditions, 16 through 22, 23, basically say that before this moves forward, before the building permit is issued, this number two, this compliance with the law will be achieved. You know, they're painting down there today, they are painting down there. So all those little signs went away, okay? The shops are closed, so all of the outdoor merchandise display is indoors this morning, at least, okay, I haven't been back there this afternoon. And the place looks so much more inviting, it looks so much more, you know, enticing for people to come in than when everything is obstructed with all these extra signs and illegal merchandise display. So that's all we're saying. All we're saying here is obey the law, obey the law as you promised to do in 2001. The, now, with regard to condition number 19, I mean, I definitely, I get it, I definitely feel that we can modify that condition in 3099 to get rid of that. In terms of the height, you know, let me just, and let me just say, this is, there's a reason for this, people, there's a reason that you need a minor use permit to do some of these things, okay? You mentioned the Marilyn Monroe statue, and you mentioned that there were, there were people taking pictures of it today. But that's, the thing that makes Marilyn's skirt blow is an interior electric fan, which is not designed for outdoor use, it has an ungrounded plug, okay? It is seriously an electrical hazard to people in that area, particularly on days that are misty, okay? So there's a reason why you get a permit, you get an inspection, you do it right, okay? And this is, this is a very good example of that. So, you know, this is, all these are saying is, all these conditions are saying is obey the ordinances, continue to obey the ordinances in order to maintain the conditional use permit as being valid, and move ahead. So that's my, that's my thoughts.
Your comments are really interesting. I just wonder, I mean, the, an accumulation of petty violation, well, not petty, but less significant violations, but nevertheless, a serious accumulation of them. You know, it's unlikely that we would opt for some sort of nuclear choice in, you know, in denying a permit. But, I mean, is there, is there a fining mechanism that's in place?
So we do, we do fines for violation of the municipal code. Most of the things that Chair Teff mentioned are violations of the municipal code, and we could issue fines for those through our code enforcement division. You know, so Commissioner Lor, you know, also referenced, you know, hey, why don't we go out there and deal with those things? Well, we've had a code enforcement program for a little over a year, laid out the process of what we were going to be doing, including proactive code enforcement. The moment that we started doing it, we got complaints. The council gave direction not to do that, and to go circle back around and, you know, pull the public on boats and RVs and driveways and setbacks and fence sites and things like that. So I am not doing proactive code enforcement on the rest of the rollout of that because of that situation. We are, I do have it scheduled, that item actually, to bring to the planning commission, the first meeting in June. It's been a long time coming, but we've been fairly busy with all kinds of things. And so then the planning commission likely will review it at one or two meetings, and then move that on with recommendations to city council, and then we may be back on track doing proactive code enforcement. Signs would be one of the areas, and was one of the things I talked about in our proactive code enforcement program, and we just said, we're not doing that. Also, we're doing a sign ordinance right now, and we'd like to get that in place and enforce on the new sign ordinance versus, versus the one that we have now.
But, you know, but I'm sorry, and I just have to respond, to me, there's even a bigger picture here, which is, there's more involved here than an enforcement issue, okay? There is sort of an ethical issue, okay? In other words, in 2001, the city said, you can build this project, okay? And the applicant, and I honestly don't know if it's the same applicant or not, said, thank you, I will do that, and I will make sure that we obey all of the codes, as it says in condition number two. So it's, we shouldn't have a situation here where it's the Wild West, where it's, you get away with whatever you can get away with, okay? There is an ethical obligation here, and I think we need to make that clear. I think, I think, to me, it's sort of unbelievable that an applicant comes forward and says, I'd like to do something different, I'd like this to be modified, even though I haven't abided by most of the conditions that were in the original CUP. So yes, enforcement is good, but enforcement is not the answer, the answer here is conscience.
Is what?
Conscience.
Yeah, I, I agree. There was, years ago where I worked, I remember talking to, talking to some builders, and the philosophy is, oh, it's easier asked for forgiveness than permission. And that kind of like mentality needs to change. And, you know, and I appreciate what you're saying about like enforcement with the RVs in the, in the city, but this is Embarcadero, this is our walkway, this is our public access, we have not only an obligation for our citizens, but all the state of California through the Titleence Grant, right? You know, that's who we're kind of addressing. So I feel what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, and not to minimize the fact that there is an educational component to it, okay? I mean, the reality is, with regard to many of the citizens, okay, who don't do this every day for a living, they don't, they don't understand, they don't know, they don't, you know, they may not know what the code is with regard to parking cars in the front yard, or when you have to mow your grass to get rid of the weeds, or, you know, a lot of these things. There is an educational component that needs to, that needs to happen out there. But, you know, but in this case, everything's spelled out, right here in this document, so.
I mean, the good, the good part about all of this is, you know, we get to push reset now and bring it back to compliance before we issue permits to do any other work, so, I mean, that's, so we get to fix it. I mean, that's, that's the good thing. And, you know, we get to, we get to fix it, and then as it's going through the process, we also have a, you know, where we're monitoring it through the time that it's under construction, and at the end, they have to maintain everything in compliance before we issue a fine. So, you know, we have a, we, it's going to be a fairly significant period of time where we're engaged with them to-
Well, and I would like to, you know, I would also like to propose, okay, as part of this, that, that, I don't know if it's a condition or how it would be worded, but, you know, that, there are, there are very specific code issues that have been outlined here. Sign code, outdoor display of merchandise, view corridors, you know, and so I would really like to see, even a longer engagement, I'd like to see this reviewed after maybe a year or two years to make sure that this is still happening.
CUP, we can review it at a year's timeframe if you want. I would note, also, I had an opportunity to speak with the applicant, with Mr. Branch, today, and he is working on, he doesn't like all the signs as well, he realizes that's a problem, and is working, you know, with his tenants to come up with a program to, to put new signage up for them and have consistent, and get rid of all the little tiny one-off signs that were there, so. He had, I talked to him this afternoon about that.
Yeah.
So he's going to come through a permitting process and that type of thing to make that happen, so.
What, going back to the land use, just for a second, there is one other item that I would like to discuss, and I honestly don't know what's going on here. But one of the things that we would not ordinarily permit on the ground floor on the west side of the Embarcadero would be office space. And there is one of the units there that is currently being used as office space. So is, when we amend this to say you don't have to have 40%, you can have 100% visitor-serving, do we want to allow that office space to be there? If so, I think we would have to include that in the amendment.
What office space is in there?
There's an office, there's a, it's at the far north corner, it's used, it's used by the, it's used by, I see the manager of the Otter Rocks using it.
Is it next to the coffee shop? I mean, the coffee shops in the-
Next to the, it's north of the coffee shop. It's between, it's right between the wall of the Otter Rock Cafe and the coffee shop.
Oh.
I'm not sure what that is. I have to look it up, I need to do some research.
Want to open public comment? Want to open public comment to ask if the applicant knows?
Is there, sure, we'll open public comment to see if you have any insight on that space.
It's currently being, being used by the folks from the Otter Rock for managing the restaurant there, but office spaces are allowed over there for management. We, Harbor Hut comes to mind, there was a second story, office space proposed and approved by the city and Coastal Commission for the Harbor Hut. So when it's in conjunction with some of the existing uses down there, that's for operations.
Yeah, well, number one-
It would need to be associated with an existing business that's there, yeah.
Right. And would it need to be an existing business onsite? Or could I-
I mean, normally, that would be the case.
Or could I have an office there for running Albertson's Grocery Store, for example?
So I mean, I think, I think the issue there is, they probably don't, I mean, they don't have a separate business license for that because their business is the Otter Rock. So that's probably why I was sort of unaware of it. I mean, because like I've told you before, I mean, I review all business licenses, so not seen one for that.
It was permitted originally. We own commercial buildings up and down the coast, and I've been here 50 years, and I work with every city in this county. So I'm up here because I heard the word unethical, I heard the word conscience. I bought the Otter Rock in 2006. I'm not sure you're aware of the backstory, but there's, we have fought claims against the city for unethical behavior. Doesn't matter about what we're doing tonight. Of all the cities I've dealt with, if you walk down your Embarcadero, I've been here 50 years, I know the Embarcadero, it's a mess down there. The public bathrooms across the street are like prison bathrooms. I offered to chip in $25,000 and raise $25,000 because the people come over and use our public bathrooms because your public bathrooms are a disgrace. I'll show you a picture I took just before I came here. So it's hard to be lectured because I'm about to spend a million and a half dollars to try and make our place great. I took down all the signs because the city didn't do anything. I called the city hall and said, there's these banners, these, these things. As a landlord, I've got 80, 90 tenants up and down the coast. This is the most difficult place to manage, it's the only place I have to interface with the government about every nook and cranny and every detail. and every detail. We welcome enforcement, we welcome the city to take a proactive role in cleaning up. And I hear Scott's message because when I call city hall, they don't, there's no, they don't want to deal with it because they're going to get flack and there's been any number of missteps by the city about getting permits and parking things and making people that come play music get permits, and I could go on and on and on. So it's hard, we're trying to be a really good tenant. We're bending over back, I don't have to do this. This wall is the city's problem for a lot of reasons. I'm not legally responsible to fix this wall. And I have been through two years of, how can I say this? I've been through two years of trying to work with a city manager that doesn't want to be in this town, with, you know, Turning in L.A. that comes up here every two weeks. Of all the city governments I've worked with, and I've done a lot of developments in San Luis, all over, never had this kind of problem. I've certainly never been accused of being unethical or not doing my job as a landlord. I mean, I really take offense. So you can sit up there and have this attitude, but it does start, it does go back to your city. It does go back to a lack of professionalism and managing the Embarcadero, period. And if you want to talk further about, I'd be glad, I've got files this thick. So I'm paying for all the new signs, we go into a professional sign outfit to do the signs or replace them or redoing the bathrooms, we're spending a lot of money, we don't have to spend that money, we're trying to make it nice. So I guess that's my two cents. We hope that you approve this. If you don't want to approve it, that's fine. It won't get built, it won't get done. We'll just give the city all the benefit of the work we've done and you guys can deal fixing the wall.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment, bring it back. I think, I'll just say personally, I'm very encouraged to hear that, you know, that, that kind of commitment makes me, makes me feel very good about the possible direction that we're going down there. I think it provides input into this whole question. I think it would be good to move, you know, I think, I think we need to talk about, when we talk about code enforcement, the direction from the council was pretty specific. We want to talk about hedges and fences and parking. I think we need to talk about code enforcement when we get to that.
No, that's part of it. I mean, you can't roll out an entire program for this and kind of laid out what the steps were going to be to do proactive code enforcement. And we were starting with the things that are the easiest to go do, and that was a problem. So it wasn't going to make more problems. We kind of had to get where we were going to go with it, and then we went out to the study, and then we've been very busy doing a bunch of other things, so I haven't had a chance to get back to it, although again, now it's back on the radar, it'll come back before you. But the intent would still be, I mean, if we're going to have code enforcement officers, we should be doing some proactive code enforcement. And we do, when we get complaints and code enforcement goes out, I said, hey, anything that's, you know, visible around you that you see, you know, those are the things you go get because you don't want to be sending a letter to somebody and then they look around and they're like, well, right next door, they have the same issue. You know, so we do pick up those types of things, and so we do that amount of proactive code enforcement, but beyond it, like going through the zoning code and getting, and going after the issues that we know exist out there, cleaning up a lot of the things down on the Embarcadero has been one of those things that was on the list, but not something because we haven't gotten specific direction out of the council to go down that road, so they understand that we're doing that. So my intent is to go down that road, though. I mean, we've done some actually down there. We, over at Togs, or at Path? Have we opened up?
Oh, Stacks.
At Stacks, yeah, the path that, we opened up, you know, the lateral access that was over there that had been closed down, so we got that, we went after that. That was a pretty easy one, but I mean, it was one that had been closed for a while. So we do do some of it when it comes up, it's just, it needs to be an overall program and I don't like doing it piecemeal, so.
Scott, may I, yeah, I can pipe in here.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one other thing to the gentleman. Those comments were really not aimed at you, they were general comments. And the same could be said of any property owner in town, probably including me, you know, that the responsibility for making sure that the property is in compliance ultimately lies with the property owner, but I, you know, this is not, that was meant as a general statement, not as a statement aimed at you personally.
Going back to the, the gentleman had a good point, you know, with the seawall, for instance, right? Now, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that seawall collapsed because there was a water line that broke, correct?
As part of the issue, there's much more behind it than that.
Okay.
It has to do with how it was originally repaired, it likely wasn't done adequately and that led to part, the walls in sections and looking, poured at a different time, I mean, yeah, it, when they originally went through and fixed it, they didn't really do a comprehensive job from what I can tell, so. Anyway, so, anyway, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we have, we have city infrastructure that failed, maybe didn't cause it, but didn't help it, right? The problem?
I don't know if it was city infrastructure or infrastructure that was on the site, I think it might have been infrastructure that was on the site.
Oh, okay.
I mean, again, I don't know that it matters, you know.
It needs to be repaired.
You know, Mr. Branch has been in a fairly protracted, as he's indicated, you know, negotiation with the city to address the issue. It's been close to two years and so it's been a long process for it.
Right.
And one that's proving to be very expensive, as he indicated, those appear to be the cost he's putting out there, so, I mean, you can see that they're so large numbers.
So basically, the leaseholders are respons, so I'm understanding correctly, the leaseholders are responsible for these?
In many instances, yes.
That's probably a question we're not going to answer here.
It doesn't have anything to do with the permit disaffirmation, do you think?
Right. I'm guessing, I'm guessing there's going to be somebody with a long black robe involved in that answer.
Yeah, why don't we get back to what we can deal with?
Yeah. Just for, could you, Cindy, could you put up the last slide that you had with the staff, staff recommended modify, yeah, the staff recommended modifications to the proposed conditions?
I would just add too, so staff had 15 through 19 on this page, then we had 12 on this page, and then just for the record, the applicant did have the request that the eelgrass condition remain as is, that we rely on the Kemp rather than changing it to the, the permitting sunlight transmission of no less than 40%. They were requesting that it remain as is. And then that was one, and then if you recall in her testimony, she said that those concrete tables are actually 32 inches, not, and so they would technically need Planning Commission approval to go over 30 inches, so, so anyway.
Are those actually, are those actually in the view corridor, though? I kind of got the feeling that they were north of the view corridor.
They're behind the building, so, I wouldn't say that they're in the view corridor.
And they're outside the 10-foot walkway, too, aren't they?
They are, so, I mean, yeah.
So that's, really wouldn't fit into that.
They're probably okay.
Their restriction, then.
It also has something probably to do with the concrete, because you have to have the space underneath the table and the depth of the table that establishes it being higher.
Exactly. So when you look at my slide, this slide and the next one, then just also recall the request to keep planning condition five as staff recommended regarding eelgrass.
Well, I'll chime in, I'm okay with that, guys. I don't think we're going to, I don't think we're going to solve the eelgrass problem at this point.
Until we get a bank.
I think, let's punt to the Coastal Commission on that one.
Yeah, well, let's punt to the, some local conservation corps.
Well, and they're in dialogue with some committee, so, you know.
Okay, staff is recommending delete 15, condition 15, I'm recommending that we keep 15 for, just for the, because of the mixed message issue. What's the feeling on that?
Yeah, I agree. I think we keep 15.
Yeah, I think we've got a, I think we have a consensus on that one. 16 modify to, modify to, shall be, shall be a minimum width of 10 feet or as close to 10 feet as is feasible.
Yeah, that's fine.
Change the wording. The key issue here is, and shall be maintained clear of furniture and other obstructions. 18 or as agreed upon in city's lease. So what I'm gathering here is that you're saying, Scott, that we have a CUP and a city lease that may say different things.
Yeah, they brought it to our attention and certainly if they have a city lease that says that, the council approved that. And so would like to accommodate that change if it exists. I, we just didn't have enough time to check because literally we got that information right before we came to this meeting and didn't have enough time to look it up. So if we're given that flexibility, then we can bring it into compliance with the lease that we issued to the, to the leaseholder, so.
Yeah. There's also weirdness, like in the, at the time the building was built, there may have been a different access code, and it could have meant that there was no way to make the bathroom accessible under the former sizes, and they may have made a concession on something like that, because all the spices, all the sizes are bigger than they were in the first versions of the ADA.
Yeah, I don't know that the current bathroom is ADA accessible. I kind of have the feeling it's not, but.
So we, one of the, it looks like the lease, specifically Covenant 8 of the lease agreement does indicate that there were two public restrooms before and that the city has agreed to allow them to convert one of those for use just by the tenants of the building. Staff and, okay, see, staff and their customers, so, as opposed to predominantly public, so it does say that.
And that, and the remaining bathroom is ADA compliant?
I don't know if it is, I mean.
It doesn't expressly specify in the lease amendment, too, but you heard the leaseholders' testimony that it is.
And what's the date of that amendment?
This is dated.
Or that lease?
It looks like, oh, wait, first page. It is dated January, oh, I'm sorry, October 11th, 2016.
Okay.
And it's signed by the mayor, the city clerk, and the city attorney.
So then, the cleanest thing would just be to get rid of 18 altogether? It's irrelevant now since we know the answer, right?
Okay.
And 19, is there?
This relates to a condition, so it would be one? Now?
Yeah.
Be one?
The way I'm understanding, it'd be one, but shouldn't we keep that condition in case for a future lease, leaseholder? Because this lease will have a time factor on it, and then at the end of this lease, it may not, it may not have a public bathroom required at all.
So just change it to one public accessible ADA compliant restroom?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, so then on 19, does anyone have an objection to getting rid of the 40% requirement? So that would, so the action there would simply be to delete paragraph two, condition three of the original CUP?
Not unless they want to bring the hall out facility back.
Might be a little tight.
Yeah, might be a little tight.
Yeah.
So we're omitting 19, is what you're thinking?
We're, the action would be, yeah, the action would be to omit 19, but also to amend the conditions of approval of the original CUP to delete the second sentence of the second, of the second paragraph under use in condition three.
So, all right, I'll take, got it. Thank you.
So that's condition 12 of the amendment, right? That's condition 12 of the resolution.
Right. In Exhibit A, the resolution.
Okay, is there any objection to deleting that?
No.
No.
Okay, so I think we have agreement. Are there any other issues that we need to talk about?
Can I ask a question? Can we supersede something that was a council resolution?
Oh, no, in this condition, I was just saying that, in condition 12, I was saying that per this resolution, the parking, the project triggers five spaces, four are free and they'd have to pay for one. But what I'm saying in the presentation is that subsequent analysis determine that in fact, their project triggers three spaces, not five, and therefore pursuant to this resolution, they don't have to pay anything. So therefore, we don't need the whole $500 thing.
Condition 12 became moot because there, there were no required in lieu fees?
Yeah, well, but we don't want to remove it entirely, we want to account for the three in lieu spaces.
Okay.
I have to do quarterly reports on the number of in lieu spaces that we grant. Today, we've had none. Here, we would have three, consistent with that, that resolution, 54 dash 16, so. So we do need to account for them and acknowledge that we're granting them.
So Scott, if they changed the kayak rental to the slip rental, then that would reinstate the, the in lieu fees for the, for that amount of slip that would be converted, correct?
Yes.
So how do we account for that? Would a future use require another, if they made that change and eliminated the kayak rental there, would they need a minor use permit to do that?
They would need a minor amendment, meaning that's something that would be a staff level change.
So you would pick up the parking requirements, then?
Correct. Yeah, we come in, we memorialize the change, pick up the parking requirement, and then they, if they do it before June 2018, then they would be required to pay us $500.
Okay, so then we just need to change the required five parking spaces to three parking spaces and then, delete everything after the word waived in the second sentence, in other words, would say pursuant to City Council Resolution 54 dash 26, the amount of the five parking spaces, the amount of the three parking spaces shall be calculated as follows, fees for the first four parking spaces are waived, period.
So would you still want the condition 12?
Chair Teft, so would you still want the Condition 12 to start out with as saying applicant shall contribute to the parking in lieu fund for the required three parking spaces generated by the addition of an additional, and then we correct the 180 to 116 lineal feet?
116, was it?
Yeah.
116 lineal feet.
Of dockage as required by the city's parking ordinance pursuant to the City Council Resolution 54-16. The amount of the three parking spaces shall be calculated as fees for the first four parking spaces are waived, period.
I think that works.
The only other thing is that kiosk building is, you know, I don't know... Well, I'd like to just leave it open. Maybe the commission can make comment. Do we want to make it a little more interesting? Or leave it at... Maybe leave it up to staff if they can... I'm just open to, like, maybe a discussion on it.
To me, it's, well, it's a utilitarian building. It's a harbor front, you know? I don't think we're... You know, I... It's a small building. It's going to be covered in... It's going to be covered in basically stand-up tattled boards and kayaks, so I would... I think it's fine the way it is. I think it's actually better than what, you know, what most of them are, and it's not that big of a deal. It's not going to even be seen from the walkway. I'm more concerned about getting as much walkway as we can across there. I think, you know, that's my bigger concern. But so I would just see it as a utilitarian building and fitting the idea of a working harbor front, so.
And I would agree. I'm sort of sensitive to the various fishermen's villages that I've seen in the Southern California area, and, you know, I'd rather try and preserve sort of a... Sort of more authentic, even if it's funky, you know, rather than something that's been decorated, you know? Yeah.
Kind of a form follows function idea, you know, but also, you know, the thing that strikes me as very positive about this little building is the integrity of the materials. I mean, the copper roof, to me, is, you know, it's integrity. You know what I'm saying? In other words, this is a roof that's going to be there 50 years from now, you know, whereas, you know, the sheet metal was going to be gone in five, so. And I thought, you know... I was also thinking, I mean, it's not just a square building. It's a trapezoidal shape, ain't I? I'm okay with it, personally.
Are you ready for a motion?
I think we are.
We had one other request on the part of the applicant. I think, was it to change the days, right, from 45 back to this?
Oh, right. Yes.
And that, quite frankly, came from a conversation that I had with Coastal Commission staff, so I guess I would maybe want to ask the applicant, are you sure you want to do that? That was really to, you know, give the flexibility to staff so you can deal with us versus dealing with the Coastal Commission on it, which is where you may end up, so I was...
We're okay with the 45 days, because Scott and I talked about it, and he's absolutely correct. It's going to be easier for us if we need a time extension to get permission from the city than going to the Coastal Commission and asking permission from the Coastal Commission. So we're comfortable with the 45 days.
No kidding. Yeah, I literally only added it so they didn't have to jump through that hoop. I mean, that didn't matter to me. It takes as long as it's going to take. I don't have an issue with it, so.
Okay. Yeah. As far as timeline, they're going to get it done as fast as they...
Right.
As fast as they can.
I wasn't concerned about it. I just thought it was something I could maybe relieve the concern from the Coastal Commission and leave it in our hands versus having to go to them and ask.
Okay, I'll take a shot at this. I move that we pass Resolution Number PC 15-17, Resolution of the Morro Bay Planning Commission approving an amended amendment case, Case Number A00-045, to conditional use permit, CUP 30-99, for repair of an existing concrete seawall riprap repair, modification of existing floating dock system, addition of one new dock slip, new 340-foot, square-foot kayak launch float, reconstruction of existing 144-square-feet kayak kiosk, along with remove and replace seven wood pilings with seven steel pilings at 845 Embarcadero, known as the Boat Yard, and with the additional amendments to the conditions that we discussed here.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? If not, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Lucas?
No.
Commissioner Sadowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Luer?
Yes.
Commissioner Ingraffia?
Yes.
Chairperson Teft?
Yes.
Motion passes for one. Is that correct? Yes, thank you.
Okay. Congratulations and good luck with your project. We have no new business nor unfinished business this evening, so we will move to Planning None?
My opposition was not out of the owner's proposal, other than I think every building deserves a chance to be a good building, and especially something on the water, because you see the waterfront from everywhere. I did want to say, maybe I should have said in this beginning, I attended a meeting of the Morro Bay Open Space Alliance, and I was very impressed with the way I thought they represented what had happened here and at the other city functions that we were part of, and that group is interested in what happens specifically with the Chevron property and some of the perimeter issues, and so I would just urge people to look at what's happening inside that group and consider if they wish to be a part of that.
Community Development Director comments.
I would note that at your next meeting, you're going to have a full agenda. This was one item. We have the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan. I have sort of allocated that across at least two meetings, so... But we also have on that a project for a new house at the lot at the end of Fig Street. Are you with the... Chair Teft, or is that right over by you?
It doesn't ring a bell.
It's Fig Street?
Yeah, Fig is... It's almost like a paper street. It dead-ends into Tideland's Park parking lot.
Yeah.
It's just north of the, you know, the 289 Main Street properties.
We'll have to check. I was actually to see if you're going to sit on it.
It could be.
Yeah. We've got to check that. Okay. And then we also have the Maritime Museum item coming forward. So again, full agenda. The... I would note that the Downtown Waterfront Strategic Plan, if you want to get a head start on your homework, is on the Plan Morro Bay website under Project Documents, so... Which is, you can get off the main website. Got a lot to it, so I would imagine you probably have a lot to say about it. Don't necessarily feel like you have to get it all in one meeting, though. If we don't, I have allocated time at the following meeting to capture some of it as well, because you guys tend to want to jump into things and roll up your sleeves and weigh in, and so I want to afford you adequate time, so. And certainly, if you do read through it, and you have... I'm always happy to take written comments. In fact, for this type of process, those are really helpful for us. So anyway, that's what we have coming up for the next meeting.
So Scott, on the... That house that was above Tideland's Park there that was framing, I think we denied it. I lost track of it after that. What happened? I see it's in the framing stage now.
The big house?
Yeah.
Yeah. He approved it.
Yeah, it was approved.
Okay, I'm sorry.
It came back with a modified design.
Yeah.
That was the lady that had a really nice drainage plan in that whole area.
Yeah, yeah, that was. Yeah, I realized that when I...
The other four houses, that's the same building.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything else? That was it?
Very well, then. We... With that, then, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting here at the Veterans Hall on May 16, 2017, 6:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
I forgot it was back there.